I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, need approval of the minutes from October 15th meeting please.
Motion to approve and suspend.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Pillar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. Alright. Proven changes to the agenda. I actually want under 11A would like to add Arlis Moss, Alley, under 11A, Old Business, please. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Then I'll take a motion to approve it. So, motion by Casey.
Second.
Second by Dan, discussion. All favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Alright, 5A, 2018 Street Project. Contractor extension request televising lift station blah blah blah.
Yes sir.
Josh, go ahead. You have a few things to talk about.
It's the first item on the agenda is the change order proposal. The contractor submitted a change order proposal for the concrete manhole pad that had to be poured around a couple of manhole castings. There were, I think, three of them on Divide Street and another one had a another location that had to be poured, however, that, the fourth one was kind of due to there being some asphalt issues that with it around the manhole. And the contractor chose to do that one instead of bringing asphalt mix in since they'd already gotten the plant out of here. So that one along with another, one of the others on Divide Street, we aren't recommending adding to the contracts. We're only recommending adding to, the one on Divide Street was damp, kind of damaged during construction, pre-construction traffic and whatnot, so. That's the, kind of what's, what's being requested as far as costs. So there's two of them at thirteen hundred and twenty dollars a piece. So total of two thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Time extension is also is being requested, so they're requesting three days.
Josh, sorry to interrupt. Can we take action on that first and then, and then move on? Monty, is that ready to do that, or?
I think you had already approved the, it just didn't, they.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been kind of discussed and approved. We just haven't done the formal.
The formal change order.
Yeah.
We had, we had directed them to do it.
Right.
Alright. Alright, go ahead Josh.
Um, time extension, so previously again, kind of same thing. Time extension has been approved through October 6th from the date that's previously been set. Again, have done the formal change order to extend that. On top of the October 6th, 6th date, the contractors requesting some additional days, so they're requesting two days for the manhole paths, three days for the valley gutter that was added on Second Avenue. And then also ten, ten more days for concrete quantity overrun. So, based on that information, kind of what we pulled together here is, you know, so initial completion date was September 15th. Contractor provided us a date on there's their, their initial schedule of August 3rd, 15 for their substantial completion. The schedule that, in that schedule filled thirty-three days for completion of the concrete work. They had that scheduled for May 7th through June 8th, which took significantly longer than the, so as far as concrete manhole pads, they're asking for two days. The, so three of them were completed within one day with the fourth being completed on the the second day. With, with the fact that we're only looking at paying for two of them, we're kind of recommending just staying within that first day for time extension on that. The concrete valley gutter on Second Avenue, they're requesting three days. With that, you know, that, that it took them like a day and a half or so to prep the area for placement of the concrete. However, the prime, or the subcontractor that was doing the con- the concrete work wasn't delayed at all during that timeframe. They were able to continue progressing with other, other works. So the, that concrete was then placed in a half day. So we're looking at, our recommendation is giving them another single day that extension for that. The third item with the additional concrete work overall that was done on the project, it's, the seventeen percent they, they mentioned only captures the base bid portion of the project. If you extend it out over the, the alternates that were also awarded on the project, it turns into a twelve percent overrun. In relation to that, basically with, you know, the contract has been extended for other, they've been given other reasons for other extensions. And just of the, that, that didn't delay the concrete work from progressing. It's kind of what kind of a mindset of not, not giving additional time on that, that portion of the request. So basically, we're looking at two additional days. What, what we're recommending on top of the August, or October 6th, excuse me, completion date.
So two and.
One for the manholes, one for the valley gutter.
Correct.
And none for the additional concrete work.
Correct.
So then if we're just giving them two extra days, is there going to be, yes, like penalties at that?
That, yeah, and that, I mean, that, that would essentially be what, what would be done. There's, you know, liquidated damages on the project are twenty-five hundred dollars a day. So I don't remember recall exactly what, how many days it would be, but I think it comes out that end up being thirty-some thousand dollars. That would be assessed if, if the city were to choose to do that.
How much is being held out right now on that ten percent or whatever kind of stuff?
We're still holding over million retained in term of the entire project. That includes next year's trips and stuff.
Sure.
Okay, do we want to take action on what we're, what we want to do with the the days of requesting for overrun?
I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with the recommendation. I, you know, as, as much as I heard the comments made, this is, this was a huge project and our contract, concrete contractor left for something else and then came back. That's, in my opinion, their problem in terms of, you know, that contractor not being here to, to take care of the work that was, was necessary. So, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of our engineers.
Here we have motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. I do want to remind you that also that the extra on the concrete, you know, the initial bid and project with, that they were given the concrete guys, got bigger as the project went too, so. That's, that is one, that's, that's their big argument is that they would have probably completed everything we're supposed to with their timeline, but we did it, so, so. Just want to make sure everybody's clear on that too. Their, their, that's. But I, yeah.
Yeah, it sounded like that there was more than one instance where the concrete contractor left and come back from a walkthrough last week. It wasn't just the one time at some, it was some part of the year.
Okay, we have motion and second, any more discussion? We'll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried.
Next item, the televising that the contractor ended up doing due to the acid that was coming in at the lift station. We, we reviewed it. Few spots where we identified, you know, it's, and it's not like it's major blockage, just a little bit kind of down in the bottom of the pipe that we identified, the asphalt there's. And there were a couple, couple locations where the, the higher flow pipe, so that we weren't able to see down to the bottom, bottom of the pipe. And then another location where we couldn't really see anything at all. Again, no major concern to there being anything, you know, major deposits other that are causing blockages, but there's, you know, traces, traces of it within, throughout, throughout the system.
So this is under because they Kemper, well not Kemper, Mayo would like us to pay for this bill or, or help with this bill?
Yeah, I believe, Monty, trust me if I'm wrong, I believe they came in and had a discussion with you about, about potentially sharing some costs on it.
Sure.
And their bills, five thousand bucks.
I'm assuming it's only high level. We've paid others ten that worked on the patch.
Ten?
Four bills.
Ten thousand, one hundred seventy-nine.
I can't remember what was, oh, I know that one was essentially higher, but what was?
Pace?
Pace, yeah.
So Pace charges a two hundred fifty dollar setup. Yep, they don't charge us to mobilization.
Nine hundred for the truck and mail. And then to clean was an average of four hundred dollars to clean the lift station. So you'd be fifteen hundred dollars.
Versus over ten thousand?
Well, the ten thousand included the other, televising the other lines and stuff. The lift station, basically, yeah, it's in that fifty, it's part of that fifty-three hundred dollars.
I'm making a motion that we, we pay what Pace would have charged us in that situation versus fifty-three hundred?
We're motion by.
I don't know what number you want to put to it, fifteen hundred?
Or fifteen-four would be fifteen-fifty.
Okay, fifteen-fifty then.
Motion by Hack. Second, second by Stern. Is there discussion?
I guess I don't, I don't quite understand why that's so much higher versus.
Well, we can't really say that Pace would charge us fifteen hundred dollars because we don't exactly know how much they would have charged for this project. So, we can put a price on it, but I wouldn't say we're going to give the Pace would cha- charge us because we don't know.
True.
And, and I believe the, the pricing from Pace with, that's just to clean the, the lift station, I'm correct? Whereas the contractor had, you know, five, six blocks of sewer that they actually televised and jetted. Whereas, so it was wider, wider spread, more, more work than what that's the guy did have.
But the five thousand some dollars you referenced, what would be specific to?
No. It does include the jet back truck call and the working time to clean that. And to televise these couple of sections.
So there was additional scope versus what Pace normally would have done for us?
Yeah.
And I don't think, did they try to get Pace or they couldn't come out? Do you, do you remember Josh?
I don't know, but I'm, I'm just assuming since Kemper was already a subcontractor attracted to them on the project, they just had, they had capabilities that handled that.
I'm not opposed to paying our share of what we would have done through Paces. I think fifteen hundred might be low in the scope of this, what they did for ten thousand. I, I'd like, I'd like to be more accurate than that.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I, no disrespect to your motion was facing, but.
Was, was that cleaning outside the scope of the project?
Yes.
That's what I was going to ask.
All, all.
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
Okay.
Well, what the claim though is from them, like mostly, you know.
From construction debris.
Yeah.
And there wasn't much there though, was there Dave, other than a couple of manholes where there was a couple, some piles?
Yeah, I remember there was a couple of, I think for Paces here, they kind of went down, buy out pails and brought stuff all out before the guy just came out to re-gain. So how much did we haul out there? I wasn't there those days.
I wish I had a more guesstimate, better figure than that. Like Nancy said.
They were charged hourly rather than by the foot, which we are charged by Pace. But for three hundred and seventy-one linear feet of twelve inch sewer, Pace charges us four hundred and twenty-six dollars. How many hours would that take? They were charging one hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the van and two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for the truck.
There is a contract unit price for televising as well, which
So you don't know if it's equivalent to what they have on here?
I would guess it's significantly over that.
Okay.
Top of the head, I don't have the fancy.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell this Monty tomorrow when I know.
Okay. I, I don't, you know, when we did the walkthrough last week with, with Moore and Kemper, or Mayo, if Ted did ask what we were going to do with this, I don't think it was paramount that we made the decision tonight and had to, you had to pay him whatever. I think they were just trying to figure out for their building purposes what, what to expect or what to be paying Kemper or whatever. Is there a way Josh, we could get a better between Paces and.
I guess, I guess the question I would have is, did the lines, had, had the, it, what benefit did the city get from those lines being jetted? Had the, had there not been asphalt material put in, you know, that got deposited in there? That would be the question I would ask whether, you know, whether a portion of that cost should maybe, you know, paid.
Because they didn't want to do it. They kind of forced their hand. Because of the stuff we were finding, the asphalt we were finding there. And in the, in the baskets at the lift stations that were, were water department was pulling stuff out.
Yeah, they were worried about that stuff getting into the pumps and.
And directing.
The pumps and go back to get sucked up off the bottom.
And how much more was in the pipes that we couldn't see, you know, so.
The benefits to the city is that we, on regular schedule, would have the other outfit coming here and clean it. Yeah. And whatever that cost us, we, that was the savings to us.
Yeah.
Well, and redirecting.
And the other savings is that the fact that we were finding as much stuff in there at the baskets already, that if we didn't do it, we could be talking some pumps that are being destroyed by, by this and that would be pretty damn expensive, so. You know, it's where do you place land?
Is this not something they would check on every construction site? Because there's got to be debris going into the pumps whenever you have a project, to some degree.
Yeah.
I mean, is this a, a large amount that go, was going in there? Or is it an average of any street project that we do?
Normally you don't end up with asphalt entering manholes, asphalt material.
Okay.
Entering at the manholes, basically what had happened was they hit, hit the manhole castings. And that gives two locations and asphalt that ended up entering the system there. So it's not, not typical.
Okay, so is this partially their responsibility?
I, yeah.
Okay.
If they didn't hit the manholes.
Right.
And stuff didn't go down there right, then absolutely definitely.
Okay.
And there's still junk down there.
Yeah.
You know, even I've noticed on my corner, since both my streets were done, you know, there is still, every day when there's rain, you can still see asphalt going into the gutters, you know, and little pieces breaking off the edges.
Yeah.
So there's going to be some down there.
Yeah.
There was eight inch, you know, eight inches deep, like that pile, you know, down there, so. That's unusual.
Well, most of the, is there just going to storms?
Might as well the storm, sure, that's sanitary, exactly. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Hack to pay up to fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred and fifty dollars for this bill. Second by Stern. I think it's low. But I'd like to get a more accurate number. We'll take a, we'll call and see.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
No.
Wolf.
No.
Over and over.
No. Motion failed. So can we, between, Monty, between you and Josh, can we get a better estimate on what, what we could? What would be fair?
What, what benefit the city got of basically the value of that portion?
Yeah.
That we can give on this information.
Okay, okay.
Did I, did I understand that?
Yeah, yes.
And I think, I think we got a little bit more benefit than just what the normal work would have been that the folks would have came in and done.
Alright. We'll just direct Monty and Josh to try to get a benefit for the next meeting. Make a motion at this point. Okay, Josh, anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
I did see, I did see up on Divide Street that they did some, some oil seal on those, the cracks that were there, did the city do that?
Yeah, we did that.
Okay. Well, that was the direction then for the, to offer those at this point? Okay.
Yeah.
And we did, I mean, we fired up the tar can, I had them do from like your driveway all the way over to twenty-seven, if not just the bayou, just do the whole street and stuff.
Yeah, that was recommended by.
In the walk down?
Yeah.
Okay.
And up on Expedition Estates, there's a couple, a couple of pieces of cracks.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, while we're on the topic, I guess we can talk about the walkthrough that we did last week with, with the engineers and the contractor. And it took us two and a half hours to go around. John had quite the list of things and when Ted from Mayo started, he had a smile on his face and by the end of the day, he wasn't so smiling. He did, he did a comment on numerous areas of asphalting and concrete work that he was embarrassed of, some of the work that was done. That was the first time I've heard him acknowledge that at all, so. There's, there's going to be numerous areas that are going to get taken care of this, this spring, that maybe with that. Out there on Dennis Caboon Street, I can't remember what, is that Eighth?
Eighth.
Yeah. So there's a big puddle of water in the road now where they did concrete work on the curb and gutter. And I think it was determined, did you guys ever get that out, that water off there or was it just?
It just kept raining, yeah. Never clicked to get it pushed off.
That, that water is now sitting there because they had the old curb and gutter that was there, there was a hundred feet of it that was low. And now they've brought that up and to the proper grade. And the water just can't get over the co- the concrete edge.
It was down far enough to where it was, where it run and run off and up the wall and into the grass.
Yeah.
I think that's why we're seeing the puddling now.
Yeah. So I think, there's, I don't think there's anything of contract work, the concrete guys or anything else.
Well, yeah, to address that, we're, for now, we're just going to try and get over there with the skid loader and sweeper and just run it off into the grass, and then that grass in next year.
Yeah, it'd be cut out, or not cut out, but they said two inch mill and then overly bring, bring the asphalt back up there once on that period. It's about twenty-five, thirty feet long.
Yeah, that's pretty deep.
So, I don't know if there was anything else that they reported to you at all.
Um, John's kind of working on compiling the list, list of items. And then for all these, all second we'll send to Monty before we give it to the contractor. Obviously, we only do one, one punch list. I guess you guys have your input on it and we'll get to the contractor here.
Okay, thank you. So that takes our 5A and 5B. Did you want Josh to stick it up, Monty?
If he could.
Josh? One second. Yeah, um, you know what, let's, let's, let's move down to 11A real quick, just so you can get up, you don't have to wait.
Okay, you have one more?
Yeah, uh, we added on under Old Business 11A, Arlis Moss and Alley Wayback there. Held by Jimmy's. So, Arlis called me last week and is pretty frustrated that nothing's being done and taken care of out there. And he's kind, he can kind of express that, it's been all summer and we've done nothing out there. You know, he did acknowledge Dave brought some material in and we, you know, tried to fill in that mud pit out there. You know, when he describes the fact that all we need to do is cut a little trench from the east end of that storage building all the way out to the west, to the road out there, and the water will run out and he just, all he wants you to do is take your blade and cut a trench there and make a run. I told, that's, that's, that's easy to say if you're a road contractor and you're used to be cutting trenches. I said, that's the, the, what is it, four inches from, from his building to that road to the west? It's not very, not much dropped, no. Four might even be generous. But I, you know, I told him that, you know, we've been, we've been told that we just need to provide for an alley to a passable, drivable alleyway. You know, the water mitigation is up to the landowners to deal with on their own, so. You know, I, I don't know if they, if he's got a hold of you. Arlis said he was going to try to get a hold of you guys again. I said, if you do, that's not on the city's dime, that's on his own, his own dime.
Yeah, and, and when John was down here for the walkthrough, he tried getting a hold of them. Wasn't able to and I think he was like, we tried calling him once or twice and.
Okay.
Yeah, I know when John was with me on that walkthrough, he had said he had to call Arlis.
Okay.
Did you make mention to him that Bruce, is it Bruce?
Bruce Hewer.
That, at.
To the south.
Commission meeting, they, he made mention that they used to direct the water into that empty lot of Arlis's before the building. And now the water's, so it's, it's actually the landowner's diversion?
Yeah, it's, yeah. So I just wanted to put that on there just to bring everybody up to what, what the last conversation was. And I told Arlis, I'm, I'm sorry, we're not, you know, starting excavation over there for them to get that cleaned out, but it's, it's not our responsibility, I think, always.
Any of the landowners diverted their rain dures?
No.
Tell them to have done anything different. Arlis called me today wanting to come over and cut a trench. But you cut a trench in a gravel alley, it's the neighborhood, feel right back in. Or if somebody drives through it, now it burns that water into somebody else's building because you're running into a little trough in the alley, you could make it worse.
And you've explained to him why that water is.
Tried to.
He said he did contact a, um, rain gutter company. And they suggest, you know, like, um, the storage unit, um, who's is it? Mike, yeah, Peterson Storage Unit. They recommend you don't run water over a hundred feet in distance if it's too heavy. And it could tear the gutters off, apparently. I don't know. That's, so, but I said, well, you've got six rain gutters that you can see standing in one spot, filling in that area. That's not our problem.
I just think it's kind of ironic that before Arlis built that building, he said, uh, the wife, I remember the, the water problem was, was not gonna be an issue. I recall. Before he built that aisle, I don't, maybe I'm.
He was, he was told that there's water and that you'd have to deal with landscaping and take care of that. Obviously.
Yeah, he's, he's dealt with it.
That's all I have for that, I guess. All right.
Anything else? I have to make it to another meeting, otherwise I'd stick your helmet.
Enjoy it.
Excellent, thank you guys, have a good night.
Five C. M D U, street light contract update.
I talked to, um, Mr. Vale. He did point out one area, the estimated monthly bill. That's an annual, not a monthly decrease in cost to us. Uh, the LEDs will save us about five thousand dollars per year enough from.
That's.
But I, I have not found and he, I have not received from him the contractor work currently in comparison to this one.
I guess this would be a great time also if they're gonna be redoing, uh, the streetlights. That I would love to see if we could do something with our main street, um, light poles and, and power poles to update them to something a little bit more, um, decorative and look nicer on, on our main street. That you see, you drive into many communities, they don't have these ratty looking old wood poles anywhere that's been there for forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years. I'm not saying do it all over town, but just on, at least on our main street from down here at the end of Heritage out to the, uh, welding shop. Uh, I don't know what they would say about those costs or sharing of it or rental agreement, but, um, yeah, I would, I would love to see us improve the, that look downtown. I'm not sure whether anybody else thinks about that, but I think it's, at least be worth a, a visit before we sign any agreement. Talk about that and see what, what costs might be. Lester?
Kerry, one of the things I heard at my economic development conference last week, uh, from the Department of Commerce, there is a proposal possibly, um, to suggest that twenty million go into the main street initiative at the state level. And so I asked, uh, you know, and that's pretty, uh, preliminary.
Sure.
Let's put it that way. But the plan or the idea behind it was is that those that have signed up for the main street initiative would be eligible probably then for, applying for those funds. And not that cities that aren't main street initiative cities, it's not like they'd be discriminated against. And that they still could apply, but the ratio that they'd be eligible to get possibly could be less. So that's one of those things that you probably would wanna watch as, uh, this stuff, uh, materializes. So that could be a, a potential, um, revenue source maybe for something like that.
Okay, sure.
Probably fit right into that. Along with, you know, other things that you chose, chose to do on main street as well.
Yeah, yeah, I was just in mind, you know, they redid their downtown streets, curb gutter streets, lights and poles and it looks awesome. Stresses things up a lot nicer. And even though we do have power lines on our poles too, I'm not sure how, what kind of structure we have to have or what there, what there is at all. But, you know, I know like, like downtown mine, uh, their, their powers in the alleys and on, underground. And their, their light poles are just light poles and not, not a power, they don't carry power lines. But anyhow, I think it's worth the discussion and see what, what that bring. And that's a good point, Lester. Forgot about, you know, the governor's ma- governor's main street initiative and us being one of those communities. Okay. Jason?
So I guess, I thought, I guess like years ago, just kind of, you know, on the, on the, I guess, on the rental, the lease on the lights, the way down now is, is on the rate like from way back when, you know, it's very old. And if we were to change it off, then we'd have to pay the new, new, I guess, rental fee.
Yeah, so it's here, uh, the municipality agrees to pay a co- the company the following monthly rental fees for each street lighting. Silly owned by the company in the municipality. And we have A through E and number, letter E, wood lift poles are seven dollars. Now, and we have like two hundred light poles in town. So I don't know if that was, that seven would move to fourteen or what it would be, but then it, you know, it wouldn't be on all two hundred poles, it'd just be.
It'd be worth a conversation because you may, for, for what you're offsetting in your overall rates with the reduced energy consumption on the LED. You know, maybe that would. There might be a, a trade off there.
Maybe, yeah.
And can the city own your own poles? I mean, if you just changed out the main streets or you don't?
Good question, yeah.
Yeah, that would have to be discussed with them too because your, your average overhead LED arm may not just fit on, you know, something that the city might select decorative and stuff like that.
So.
Might have to be something that would be discussed with the service and utility.
Yeah, you'd want it to be easily, you know, worked on, you know, and what's something that's. Yeah, maintenance wise, not a nightmare.
Now, I'm gonna get a hold of Mr. Vale, see if he'd be available for upcoming meetings.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you, any other discussion?
And just have them, have them be prepared to talk about what they might have, might do in, in other communities.
All right, that takes us down to eight A Liquor License Box Bar.
This will actually be their two thousand nineteen liquor license, which will only be effective January one of two thousand nineteen. But he would like to get the approval of the city now so he can continue the process with the state to have that in place in January one.
That's not an issue, Pat, for us to, okay. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion.
So then, uh, kind of state there is, state there is a license. Like what's the fee on that?
Honestly, there's just only a couple hundred dollars for you. And ours is about a thousand dollars for it's on out.
So then as we, uh, as we then like normally do it like at the end of the year, um, what kind of plan thing, the state is, do they need to get their approved or?
All, all, all I was told was he needs to have his city one before he can do the state one. It's usually at least a couple of weeks to, for them to have to, I mean, if they're.
Miss action doesn't cost the city anything one way or the other?
Yeah. He will, he'll still be responsible for paying this fee for the two thousand one two license.
Okay, the motion, second word discussion. Real call. Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over. Aye, motion Kerry. Okay, other reports, uh, water sewer. Streets, cemetery.
Uh, just to touch on, Jared kind of mentioned it there. Ran a walk through the last Wednesday, uh, went well. There's John's, I tried to get John to move here, I'm still working on it. John is just, uh, really good at what he does. And, uh, he's definitely sticking his neck out to support or represent the city, so excellent job. I mean, he's, there, it was Jared and I and him right at the end, and then Jared had to leave eleven thirty, so it was John and I hopped in my vehicle. I mean, there was areas where we gotta go there, and he's like, no, I got it, something minor, but I've got it written down. So, I mean, and he got, he's got stacked full of papers, um. Other than that, is there something that, oh, I don't know what it is. We don't have to act on it now, and I don't know, Dave, if you've got any more information and talked to another municipality on the cutting edge?
We have some information from, uh, Burley County.
I didn't look at my mailbox.
Any stuff, but I haven't found any actual city using them on angle blades. It's more like colonies on their trucks out on the highways or colony roads or whatever.
It's kind of where we're at right now. Dave's been trying to, uh, reach out to a municipality that is currently using it just to see if it's more beneficial on, on the state highways, if it'd be beneficial to us. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I feel like we need the pool tractors quite yet until we, I know, we are still looking at that. And then, uh, we put together what you saw there, so I'm here to, so.
That's, um.
Oh, kind of, never mind, only the twelve eight.
Yeah.
Um, that's all I have on this thing.
Okay, you've got a new wood dirt box out at cemetery.
That Eagles all project is back completed.
Your list, you look nice. So. No, I, I, I agree to what you said, John, I thought John did a nice job, and you, Dave, you heard him too. He didn't let, uh, Mayo off the hook very often on that walkthrough. And there's a couple dozen points that he made that when they said, ah, that's not that big deal. He, he did step on it pretty good and make sure they're gonna be comfortable.
There is one more thing I'm sorry. Uh, when we were doing that walkthrough, we ended up, one of the stops was over at Moses Park. And we looked in, in the manhole covers and after the fact, I'd asked Ryan to bring the jetter over. And that was, what was that?
I won't forget when it was, yeah, what it was.
Whatever day it was, um, I told him to call me, uh, so I wanted to be there when they did it just out of curiosity because there was water, city. I don't know, probably.
Halfway up on.
Halfway up. And I don't know, I called Jared, he watched too. I think there may be an offset, you know, a tease, you got your sanitary and then your, help me out here.
But you got your two basins on each side of the street, come to the middle, and then the later.
They're both storm, they're both storms.
All storm, right, but I want my half, um, an offset.
An offset, because we, we jetted both ways. And then we went that way and then stopped probably, I don't know, three, four feet in. And then Ryan got over the top of whatever it was and then he comes from the other way. He thinks that may be an offset because when he pulled back, it caught.
Did he get a hold of targets to come over?
I don't know if he did.
But there was, there was mud in, at the tee, but they backed out and they backed out on the, uh, north side of the street. So, uh, the other place that they did that A, I don't know if you did any more, but over by, uh, Bluebirders. There was mud there as soon as they jetted through that and pulled through it washed that.
And this isn't the contractor's problem, this, this is just.
This is the water.
Yeah. Yeah, and if there's an offset, it's nothing that they were replacing, it's a piece of, you know.
The way back.
Storms are, has been there quite a lot.
We cleaned the water off, so that's kind of.
Hopefully it doesn't freeze up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're gonna, water department, Dick is, and Ryan are gonna get a hold of, of targets to see if you can camera it. See if, if you could see if there, the pipes have come apart and offset your lines happening, so we'll see if they find out.
So Dave, what was, what was the city's involvement with the project? The Eagles go project?
Uh, location and I designed the box and then the Eagles go built it.
They, they did all the building?
Yes.
They, they did the whole system too, yeah, yeah.
Hey.
Yeah, we offered the holes and then he said they had to make arrangements to get equipment to do the holes themselves, so, yeah.
Okay, finance bussing.
Um, the bus will be running tomorrow for the election in Mula. Anyone needs to take advantage of it, um, other than that, I have nothing.
Police, fire?
Uh, police, we, we had a staff meeting last Monday. Quite a number of items were discussed there, some of which we're, we're gonna be looking at budget monies come the first part of the year. We've got a, a couple of issues with, with some of the vehicles with regard to the radar and camera systems and stuff like that. So I told them that if we're gonna have that in the vehicles, we'll wanna make sure that we're setting aside monies and stuff for that. So we're probably looking at what we have for the remainder of the year, it's kind of tight, so we'll probably be looking at first of the year. Uh, on the fire department side of things, we've got two interviews set up for potential firefighters. They do, uh, they do have some interviewing criteria, even though it's a voluntary organization. And they have received their bunker gear, they've got six sets. And this is something that, that we, the commission city had, uh, set aside funds for one of those and the county one. And then they do their fundraising for the remainder of that, so they have that in hand now. And that's it.
Questions for Dan? Okay, thank you, Dan. H C D, Buster?
The only thing that I have to share is that, uh, we did get, finally got the extended driveway board over at Pioneer, it looks good. So.
Do we have another person living there?
Uh, well, I know there's three in there for certain, I'm not sure if there's a fourth one in there or not, I think there is.
Yeah, I saw she had posted out there on, uh, social media that there were four residents in there now. And she was doing an informal survey on.
Garage.
Whether a garage would make a difference or not, like that, so.
And if you did garages, would they go on that east end?
On the east end, and, uh, there's room for eight of them over there. And that the, uh, fighter, uh, fighter board, they did approve if, uh, doing the garages, if the financial situation would, or all that to happen. And, uh, Joe Fink and, uh, the Housing and Finance group would sign off on it, which, uh, I'm assuming they will because I did have lunch, uh, last week with one of the representatives from Housing and Finance. And she basically told me, whatever you would need to do to make them marketable, you really should do that. And so Greg was working on the numbers, some numbers today and trying to get the final balance of.
That'd be great. Thank you, Buster. Ten A, um, visitors guide, I just talked to Antoinette and, you know, our last, last year we had the inside cover, the front cover. It's four hundred and fifty dollars. And, yeah, we don't get it this year, Basin now is gonna take this and list all their new employees. But this page is offered to us at two hundred and fifty instead of four fifty. So Antoinette said, are you, are you okay with that? I thought, that's great, if that's a two hundred dollar difference there, I'm, that sounds good to me.
It's thinner.
It is thinner, yeah, yeah, it's not as glossy, but it's still pretty darn nice, eh? Well, it is glossy, isn't it? Yeah, so.
It's the same.
We need, we need to make a motion for, if we wanna spend two fifty on the.
Is it two fifty or two hundred?
Uh, two forty is what I see.
Non-chamber member?
Two hundred.
Oh.
So a chamber member's two hundred.
Okay, two hundred.
For a full page, yeah.
Okay.
I will make that motion.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
I'll second that.
Second by Keller, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Pack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried. And we took care of eleven A, Arlis Moss, twelve A, um, city property for sale. All right, I'd like to see this. Quite a list here.
Dave's cleaning up the place.
Dave, what can you tell me about that seven and a half horsepower air compressor, is that, is it operable and it's
Yeah, Ross, that was the old one that was in the shop. When the fire department got a new one, the old one was brought off the shop, and a couple of years ago, we finally had that hooked up, because that one was just sitting up in that loft area, so we took it down. It's actually just an old, uh, army surplus one that probably was supposed to be picked up years ago or whatever, and it kind of just puts off a little more pressure, it's just faster recovery, we know that one does work, but it was really making cumbersome. So it's just kind of sitting here taking up space.
So, Marty, do we have to approve this list?
Well, no, this is basically informational, I'm not even gonna sell these unless there's some objection to selling ones, the bus is still pending approval by the state to release the wing units.
Okay.
The international truck has an old dump truck, we're gonna take the box and place some stuff off of that. Send it off to the site and save it for when we convert, uh, the old garbage truck to a dump truck, and we'll decide to order. I talked to Dave and Ryan, we told them if they had any surplus equipment or something, that water plant or
They do, they do.
Have them done the same, that's, we get it all this at one time.
We've got a bunch of motors, stuff over there.
Yeah, we got some stuff that they're not using or that's still good, but
So this is, okay, December nineteenth.
Uh, that'll change probably, depending on how quickly we get it after.
Okay. All right, that's a nice list for cleanup. Hopefully get a few bucks. All right, um, takes us down to approval of the build.
I have one thing.
Yeah, take it with.
That old dog also I talked to, like, can, you want us to go ahead and repair that?
If you think it's, you tore that inside out and gutted it?
Yeah, it's really good shape, like I say, the front wall wasn't built right, so we just need to add some studs.
Yeah.
And frame it a decent door and, uh, all the sill plate and all that stuff is all good, so.
I suggested to him on Monday that that was the path that we were along.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, good, go for it.
We'll get after that, yeah.
Thanks.
We'll see if new ones on, I think, today, the bunker here.
So I got a couple of questions. My concrete work, that's part of the underpass.
So originally, you'd be asking there, Mr., there was actually a big crack there, that had separated. So he cut, cut everything square, and then when they started digging into it, the water was just pushing up through the base, so he had to dig that out a little bit, put some new classified in, then he rebarred everything and repoured that. So his original estimate was eight hundred, and he got into it, Dave and I met with him and said, you know, go ahead, repair that base, get it right. So that did go up about four hundred dollars for that, over his original estimate.
So is that the one that really, really, I mean, I never, does drain right then?
I think that's where the water
It was holding there, yeah, it was sucking, yeah. So hopefully it'll run, push it through.
Okay.
Hopefully.
And then on the, on the advertising, it was, it's like six hundred dollars, so.
Oh, yeah, that's on the Heritage Park fundraiser, so, so they, the money that's coming in will go back out, we're just kind of passing through on that.
Speaking of concrete, Casey, one item that was brought up on the walk through was your crosswalk. It's such a great spot to have that. Um, Ted from Mayo did, it was broken, and he did say, do you want, do you want it replaced, or do you tear it out and put it back to grass?
I love the grass.
If you want it back to grass, they'll do, they, they will, they'll do that. Um, if you don't want the crosswalk, you know, the thing right there, so. They did, they did mention that, so, if we said we'd bring it up to you, I almost forgot until you brought it up.
It seems kind of weird, I guess.
Yeah, and it's one of the D O T specs for the, getting, you know, the, the, the funding, yeah, that's, some of those are ridiculous, but. Okay, we'll tell them, in the spring, we'll probably just tear it out, yeah. Not sure if they're gonna build the curb back up or be a low curve there. Yeah, so, maybe we'll see if they're, they're doing that at no cost. I would hope so too. Right.
I mean, if there's gonna be a cost, then I'll just I'll tear it up myself. I'll take care of it.
All right. Do we have a motion for the builds yet? Okay, motion by Wolf. Second by Pack, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Pack.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi. Motion carried, immediate adjournment?